May I have your attention, please? We'll be starting up shortly. Good evening and welcome to the Lowell Planting Board for October 20th, 2025. The first matter on the agenda is the approval of the minutes from October 6th, 2025. Any of the board members have any comments on the minutes?
Mr. Chairman, if no comments, I will make a motion to approve the minutes as submitted.
Motion's made. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second. All must say a aye.
Aye.
Chair votes yes. Those minutes are approved. Moving along the agenda, we do have one matter that was requested to be withdrawn. Is anybody here for the Van Greenby tree hearing? We got a letter from DPW requesting it be withdrawn. If someone's here? If they're not, then we'll move along and come back to it in order then. Okay? So, excuse me, we have a definitive subdivision, 129 Llewellyn Street and 115 Christian Street. Lowell Planting Board will hold a public hearing to hear all interested persons relative to the application by Christian Hill Homes LLC to subdivide the property at the above address into seventeen lots and construct a new single-family home on each lot. The subject property is located in the suburban, single-family zoning district. The project requires definitive subdivision approval from the Lowell Planting Board under Lowell Subdivision of Land Regulations. This matter was before was before, and it got continued, and then we had some information input given to us by some of the city departments. It got continued again, and so it's back before this this evening. At this point in time, may we hear from the applicant, please? Excuse me.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. For the record, David Plunkett, 491 Dodden Street in Lowell, represents the applicant here tonight. Mr. Chairman, since the initial meeting and following the subsequent continuation to tonight's meeting, there's been a significant amount of work at the site. We have tonight Marco O'Hara, the engineer in charge of development of the site, and we also have the present here tonight is for the landscape design. Ms. Verge will do a presentation of the very nice presentation proposal for landscaping at the site. You know, Mr. O'Hara will address the issues that's going to pertain to a number of the questions and issues that were brought up by the board members and subsequent to our initial meeting, the input letters from the engineering department and other, you know, City of Lowell, you know, departments. At this point, I'll just turn it over to Mr. O'Hara, and he'll review all the changes that have been made to the plan since the initial presentation.
Excuse me. Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. My name is Marco O'Hara, O'Hara Engineering, 21 Mansion Drive, Lowell, Mass. And as Mr. Plunkett had mentioned, we did add a lot of information to the plans based on the responses we got from you, from the city. We did meet on-site with a soil evaluator, as well as with city staff. To go over the soils, I'll get into that in a little bit. I just want to, I just want to show the changes that we did to the plans and what we added. So, the cover sheet did not change all that much, updated based on the changes, but very minimal. The second sheet is the plan that was not included with the original set because we were using the approval-not-required plan that had already been approved, and that was prepared by another engineering firm. So, we keep the lots the same dimensions, the same as what they had shown on that A&R plan, but this shows the two homes that has already been constructed as part of an inter we applied for a three-lot A&R plan so they could get started. So, those two homes exist and are shown as these two right over here. They were lots sixteen and seventeen. It's a seventeen-lot development. They skipped these two lots and will be building, or they poured the foundation for Lot 13. I drove by there today. They're already got it structurally. It's up and they're, I think they'll be working on the roof soon. So, this sheet was added. It takes the seventeen lots, eliminates the first two because they were part of the other plan, and this shows the breakdown of the fifteen lots. I believe one of the Planting Board members was looking for this plan, which is typically included in the subdivision, but because, like I said, this was already approved under another A&R, didn't want to really cause confusion, but we're going to be referencing these plans in anybody's deed, so they'll be able to find it at the registry of deeds. Existing conditions has not changed. This is your grading and utility plan. Not many changes on this, but we added this fifth sheet. Now, this is a plan and profile of Christian Street. I felt that this would give you an idea of what the slopes are out in Christian Street. It's a steep road. It's fourteen percent at its peak slope, and you can see it. I mean, this is exaggerated at a ten-to-one scale, but it is a fourteen percent slope at its steepest. We show all the existing utilities, the sewer, the water that exists, as well as the infiltration drains that the city installed, where the water was weeping out of the side of the hill the most. So, they have sections of it right in the middle of the road, and then we're extending that coming up the street with the same detail of what the city used to help remove the water from the hillside when the water table is high in the spring. But we will also be replenishing the water table because each house has been designed to have the rooftop runoff going to an infiltration basin that then will fill up, and before it overflows, it will spill out into the infiltration drain that's in the street. That was, oh, it's on the street. It's in the shoulder of the road, and that was something that we agreed upon when we met with Stormwater and Engineering. You know, they were able to help alleviate a problem, and we thought that this was the best solution. So, this will replenish the water from the rooftops, and it will also alleviate the high water table. So, we added this sheet. We also added just a cross-section of the site going from Llewellyn Street to Christian Street, and this is not exaggerated at a ten-to-one scale like typical profiles are, but I wanted to show what the actual grades would look like. So, this is at a one-to-one scale. We show a two-to-one slope, which is an engineering standard for slope stability. You could actually go steeper based on these types of slopes, but we figured we'd go with the engineering standard. It shows the profile of the land, the fills as well as the cuts. We had to do cuts and fills to meet the minimum area requirement. It's in the zone of regulation that you must provide ninety percent, or I should say, it's ninety percent of the minimum lot area at less than a six percent slope. So, that's why you see a lot of the significant grading was to be able to cut and fill to at least meet the slope requirements, and so the lots will be flatter near where the houses are on both sides of the street. The houses that are currently being built were the most difficult to beat because that was where the slopes were the steepest. So, if you go by the site, you'll see mounds of soil. Like I said, I'll go into the soils because that was one of the concerns that you guys had, and this detail just shows you a typical house with the gutters going into the five-hundred-gallon drywall that overflows into the proposed infiltration trench. So, we added this sheet. Sheet seven, I just added the stormwater calculations. Lowell uses the one-inch rule. It's a very standard, simple calculation that wherever your proposed and impervious surfaces, whether it's a driveway, walkway, roofway, you just calculate the volume of one-inch water times the total impervious area, and you get a volume, and then you must provide that same volume for retention or infiltration back into the ground. So, with each house having its own individual drywall for the roofs, and then the extension of all of the infiltration drain in the street, we're able to meet that requirement. There were some minor changes or additions to this sheet, the detailed sheet, but nothing significant. In addition to that, we met on-site, like I said, with a certified soil evaluator. Her name is Maureen Harold from North Environmental, and we met with the city engineering department as well as Stormwater and some of the city interns, and Maureen gave us a breakdown of the soils. The soils are a basal till. It's my understanding they're a Paxton fine sandy loam. That's a common soil in Massachusetts. As a matter of fact, I learned from her that it is the official state soil. So, there are four hundred thousand acres of the Paxton fine sandy loam in Massachusetts, typically found on landforms like this site, which is a drumlin, and all of the classic scents. If you read up on drumlins, they were formed during the last Ice Age, twenty thousand years ago. They're a basal till, meaning that they're unsorted. They're just a mix of, well, I don't want to say clays, but there were some fines, there were sands, there were some gravel, as well as boulders. So, it's a common soil. It's very firm and compact because it had a mile of ice on top of it. It was not the other type of glacial till, which is the alluvial till, which is a result of the glaciers retreating and depositing, like very stratified sands, beach sand type of material. Those materials are more likely to erode, so I didn't have any concern with this type of soil being built upon. These soils, if you look it up, they are typical. Some where they remove the soils and it's been tilled, they will, it is not ideal, but it is a common farming type of soil, but more often than not is usually a pasture or an orchard, which was the case in this situation. But they're also used quite often as home sites, so this is not an unusual soil. It does have some unusual specifications about it. It tends to have, what I'm told, is a perched water table. Because it's so compacted and dense, the water has a difficult time penetrating through down to the true water table. So, what happens in a situation like this is it hits a restrictive layer, and it tends to move along that restrictive layer, and sometimes that restrictive layer will end or you'll have a hill that becomes steep, and it will actually break out of the ground, which is what I believe has been happening on this site probably since the glaciers retreated fifteen thousand years ago. So, the city was aware of, you know, the water. I was aware of it. Like I said in the last meeting, I drove up and down Christian Street for ten years. My kids went to school on the other side of Christian Hill at St. Michael's, so I was familiar with the water making its way out into Christian Street. It can become kind of sketchy, particularly in the wintertime when you get a rainstorm. It breaks out onto the street, and you're driving down that street in the morning, and there's black ice, so I would tend to avoid it, but I was always checking out what was happening on this site. So, again, meeting with the city, they told us what they were doing, what they've done. They installed an infiltration type of trench on the north side of Reservoir, and then they installed the underdrain that's on Christian. It's a couple hundred feet long, but as part of this approval process, and what we agreed to do was to extend that up and down Christian Street. As I mentioned, we did meet with the city on-site with Maureen, and she gave us a breakdown of that soil. She went over the water table, explained how the water was perched, and showed us examples of it, and we received a letter from Stormwater about that. I mentioned we could do further testing. This was a letter that was back in August. We don't have any problem. We never did, it was not a point that we didn't want to do test pits. My point, it may have been confusing, was that if you do a test pit, but you're going to be cutting down that soil ten feet, the data that you're getting is not really going to be relevant or pertinent when the soils, you'll be actually, when you're at grade, are going to be below what the test pit was. So, what I've done in other cities and towns is we've done test pits. We confirm what the NRCS shows on their maps, that they are in fact those types of soils, but if there's significant cuts or fills, we agree to bring the site close to finished grade and then do another test pit so that we can get information that's more pertinent to what the conditions will be in the fully developed site. So, we have no problem doing that. I don't know if they mentioned anything. There were some last-minute discussions and letters and phone calls that I was speaking with the city about their second review or their review of the set of plans, and I did get a letter from Gordon Bergeron from Wastewater today, and the applicant, I went over it with him. Unfortunately, he had a family emergency, a medical emergency, so he wasn't able to be here tonight. I think he's trying to watch it on Zoom, but he made me aware of where he stands with these items, and the only item that I thought could be potentially an issue was how it was worded with the retaining walls and being able to pull permits. Typically, what we show at this stage in any type of a development is a retaining wall, and if it's over four feet, we put a note or a call out that that will, needs to be designed by a geotechnical or structural engineer because over four feet does require a design by a person who specializes it. And typically, the plans get approved or approved with conditions, they go out and they start developing the site, and when they get to the point where they are meeting with retaining wall contractors or providers, Shea Concrete, Allen Block, whomever it may be, those companies typically have an engineer in their staff that will prepare and stamp the plans with the level of detail that the city typically gets when the wall's being constructed. And I know we showed three walls on the site, one on Lot One, one on Lot Seventeen, and I believe the other one was on the corner lot of Christian and Reservoir. I think it's Lot Eight or Nine. But in any case, we don't have a problem with that. The wall would be designed by others. There's a couple of other items that came up that I'd like to address or at least bring up because I know these were also some concerns that either staff had or you had. One of them was the curbing. I know that Mr. Katie from the engineering department recommended that the applicant install vertical granite curbing for the site. Vertical granite curbing, I have it in front of my house. It has its benefits. It lasts a long time. It's very durable. It's also very expensive. At this development, if you were to go to the west side of Christian Hill, it's much more urbanized. There is mostly vertical granite curbing in those neighborhoods, but once you get up to the top of the hill, it's a mixture of, goes mostly from granite to Cape Cod batuminous type of curbing, which is on Reservoir, and Christian Street itself has batuminous curbing that is the higher-profile, more traditional, I want to say it was like more common in the seventies and eighties type of curbing. It's also batuminous, and there are also sections of Christian Street that have no curbing at all. So, we are proposing that we would like to be consistent with what's out there in the street with Llewellyn. That would continue to be vertical granite curbing. The curbing would be removed and reset to provide for the driveway access openings. We would do the same with the Cape Cod type of berm on Reservoir Street. Those driveway openings, you know, the curb would be cut and fixed and repaired in kind with what exists out there, and the same thing with Christian Street. That would also be the higher-profile batuminous curbing. As I mentioned, it's probably one of the most expensive part of development is the curbing, particularly when you have radius curbing, which there isn't in this case, but you're probably looking at a cost of about a hundred dollars a foot. So, if it's a thousand feet, that'd be probably a hundred thousand dollar additional cost item. I know that on Third Street, I've been out in this area, and they are repairing, resetting the granite curbing. I don't know what contract it was, but I know they've been doing work out there in the past. I bring this up because it's something to consider. In the past, they would just resurface a road, and they would bring all the grates and manhole covers up, and they would just keep paving on top of it to the point where there was no more reveal on the curb. At some point, you got to reset the curbing, and that's what they're doing on Third Street, or at least that's what I saw, I believe was happening, was they were pulling the curbing out, resetting it with the six-inch profile, and then putting in the new sidewalks, probably six inches higher than what they were before, or four or five inches higher. It's a costly endeavor to do that, and the city, you know, ultimately ends up owning and repairing the roads. It's just something to consider. The other thing, too, and actually one of the neighbors pointed this out to me, I have vertical granite curbing in front of my house. It's curved, and my daughter has blown out her tire on that curb a couple of times. It's difficult for a person who's been driving for thirty or forty years to park on a curved, on a curved roadway with vertical granite curbing that's kind of tipped into the road more, so it's even more dangerous to tires. You know, that's just another consideration. I know the city likes it. I know Joe likes it. People have their preferences. I think it's good for the city, especially in urban areas. It holds up to the weather. It holds up to the plowing, but typically, you'll see less of it in the more rural areas. So, I just wanted to say that our position was let's stick with what exists out there. The other item was, this was brought up just recently to me, and it was something that just slipped my mind. There is street parking on these streets. The streets are about twenty-eight feet wide, which is pretty standard, twenty-eight to thirty feet, so you can easily park a car in these streets, and cars can get by. If there's cars on both sides of the road, people will tend to slow down and let each other pass each other, but parking is not in demand in this part of the city like it is in other developments that I've worked on, where the houses maybe have forty or fifty feet of frontage, they've got a driveway, and there's hardly enough room for one additional car out, you know, on the street. And I know the city has a policy to try to keep the driveways, I think, to a maximum of twenty feet, and that's for good reason because, you know, parking is at a premium, especially in the downtown areas, so let's try to provide as much on-street parking as possible. But in this neighborhood, particularly in this area, I don't think you're going to have the neighbors concerned about losing parking spaces, so if the city's okay with twenty-four feet wide, we'll keep it at that, but if there is a policy that we need to ask for a waiver to have it more than twenty feet, we'll just revise the plans and show a twenty-foot opening. That'll further reduce the total amount of impervious area. The other item that I wanted to bring up that was brought up in the review letter by Mr. Katie was requesting a third-party review of the engineering. Normally, I wouldn't have an issue with this. This is kind of a unique situation where we were, where the original builders sold the development to another builder with the assumption that all permits were in hand and they were shovel-ready to go, and that's how it was, you know, this, it was started, and then we were notified by the city. I wasn't notified, but the Christian Hill Homes, the developers, were notified by the city that they had to come to the Planting Board for subdivision review, and it's something that I never encountered before. It was a first for me. I don't know of any other city or town that requires subdivision review for approval-not-required plans, but we said, we're going to try to work with the city. We will work with the city as best we can, and we'll put together a set of plans as quick as we could because we didn't want that to hold us up because the cost of just the financing for these, this development is significant to the owners of this property. So, so, third-party review at this point, I'll make an argument that I don't think it's necessary because this is not a typical subdivision. It's really an A&R plan as a proven not required, at least by the state and how it is interpreted by other cities and towns, and I know Lowell is different. They're going to have it go through subdivision approval, but with typical subdivisions that are not A&Rs, they require new roads. New roads need to be designed. New roads need new utilities. New roads need stormwater devices like detention basins, infiltration basins, and stormwater features on a much larger scale than just the individualized ones that we show in this plan. So, I don't think it would be necessary. We did meet with city staff, engineering, both stormwater and wastewater, as well as engineering, and we see this really is just seventeen individualized lots. Yes, we see it as one big project, and the state, as well as the federal government, are going to look and review it. This is one big project, but they could go ahead and start each lot individually, and the way it's set up with this developer and the bank is that they will be building three lots at a time and selling them, moving on to the next three, and moving on to the next three, and moving on to the next three. So, as to kind of minimize the amount of overall disturbance, there still needs to be a lot of the material from the lower part of the hill where we'll be doing cuts, brought up to the higher, upper part of the hill, but that's just part of this type of development. Again, there were some last-minute letters and communication that went along that, and I wasn't able to see those letters. I don't have them, but I know Mr. Plunkett got it, but I did speak with Joe Katie when he was drafting up those, his letter, so I have a general understanding of what it is. I'm here for any questions you may have, but I want to hand it off. One of the other things we did, and we know that the landscaping was a concern, particularly the street trees, as well as some interior trees, and I really couldn't think of anyone better than Angie. She's, I've done a lot of work with her on other projects in the city, and I think she presents a, drafts up a very nice plan, so I'm going to hand it off to her, and any of us will be here to answer any questions. Thank you.
Thank you, and good evening. My name is Angie Verge. I'm a landscape architect with Angie Verge Landscape Architecture and Design in Carlisle, Mass, and I prepared the landscape plan for the Christian Hill Homes project. Per the comments from the city, a landscaping plan was desired, and I think the overall intention was to increase the overall vegetation on the site and introduce the presence of some native trees on the lots, and also using vegetation to stabilize some of the steeper slopes in the rear of each of the lots, and we're achieving this goal through some of the following additions. We're proposing two street trees per lot. Along Christian Street, we have some restrictions with the drywells close to the front of the property, as well as overhead wires, so I'm proposing some medium-sized trees that will not interfere with either of those two wires or the drywells. Along Reservoir and Llewellyn Streets, I'm introducing larger shade trees. Along Reservoir and Llewellyn Streets, I'm introducing larger shade trees, such as red maples, pin oaks. These can be pushed further into the lots, avoiding the overhead wires that are running along the perimeter. There's also an existing woodland behind the property lines on the southern side of Christian Street. And I'm proposing that we add three trees per lot in the interior, so a total of 27 large native trees. And the idea is to expand the existing woodland and to also extend the wildlife corridor that exists towards the reservoir on the other side of the street. And this proposed woodland planting includes eastern white pine, it includes red oak, and these are currently part of the existing plant community on the site. These native trees are also pretty aggressive in their self-seeding with the idea that these soils will promote pretty quick establishment of a successional sapling layer. For the steeper slopes, the two-to-one slopes on the back of the properties, we're proposing hydroseeding with an herbaceous seed mix that's designed for erosion control and site restoration in these dry and average soil types. This includes native grasses and forbs that will reestablish, they'll establish quickly and they'll help stabilize the soil while the area naturally revegetates. And that is the components of the landscape plan, and I welcome any questions or comments from the board. Thank you.
Anybody else on behalf of the applicant? Okay, hearing none. At this point in time, I'll turn the matter over to the public. Anybody here this evening like to speak in favor of this project? In favor? In favor? In favor? Hearing none. Anybody like to speak in opposition? Just come to the microphone, please. Give us your name and address, please. Thank you.
Thank you. Corey Robinson, 5 West 10th Street, Lowell, Mass. I have a couple of questions here. Last time we met, we discussed some real engineered plans to mitigate the stormwater As was stated earlier, this property is purchased from a previous developer with an assumption, approval not required. I think it's been pretty clear that because of three or more being subdivided on one contiguous space, then site plan reviews in order for the subdivision component of an overall approval not required project. I think we're being told that the plan with the bank is to do three parcels at a time, sell them, move to the next three parcels. But yet they came in and clear-cut the entire parcel out the gate, flush down. There was no consideration about stormwater runoff or mitigation efforts at that point, especially where you're only building on, as was spoken earlier, three parcels at a They're doing this to minimize overall disturbance. I mean, how much more can you disturb when you clear-cut the entire parcel, for the most part? One of the documents that's been accompanied on the site from the stormwater comments, it's clear on there, one of the comments here specifically says, "They would recommend no permits are issued unless they submit, until they submit the retaining wall plan." That's one piece on there. Sheet four calls out the retaining wall to be included, but it's to be designed by other. I would recommend that a retaining wall design be submitted before any permits are issued. They also go on to speak about, there's not really solid plans tying in some of the drainage systems, and as of October 14th, there were no test holes. And they're requesting, again, and that's all under the stormwater comment section on the planning board's site. I just think, to come up here and say, they don't, they want to dispute a third-party, a recommended by the city engineers, recommended review of their engineering plans. I mean, this engineering plan that they're presenting was just hatched in a matter of two months. And with a 100-foot difference from highest point to lowest point, we still don't even know what it looks like for retaining. Is there going to be irrigation for the landscape plan to keep the soil, I mean, the hydroseeded areas in place? We don't know none of that. That's, and that's just cosmetic and surface. What are we doing to really mitigate, as was mentioned before, for the past 150 years or whatever it was, when that water sheets in between layers and dumps out on the public way, as it's been doing for quite some time? We're still not really even addressing that. Never mind, all that's been clear-cut and then the addition of impervious surface. So I hope that the board is really looking for some review on the proposed engineered plans. I do think the developer and the team are trying to work to get to a point where the compromise is made and some of the concerns are mitigated, but I still don't think that it's anywhere near that yet. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Anybody else like to speak in opposition? Just come to the microphone, give us your name and address, please, sir. Thank you.
My name is James Harrington. I live at 201 Christian Street, up at the top of the hill. I forwarded a letter to the planning board, and when I forwarded that letter, the 63 trees that were in the reservoir were existing as of today or last week. Those trees no longer exist. And if anybody was up on the hill this morning, they saw the runoff, not only on the street, but within the reservoir itself, flowing down because of the lack of trees. The letter that I wrote to the planning board listed the 63 trees that were being cut down, that were approved by the planning board, and the amount of water that each tree absorbed during a year's period of time. Some of the trees, the biggest one was like 55 inches in diameter, two small ones, two or three inches in diameter. The spreadsheet that I provided listed all the trees, their size and what type of tree they were, and the amount of water that they absorbed during the year. The end result was 170,000 gallons of water that those trees absorbed, that are no longer absorbing water in the reservoir, and that water is going downhill. They're not going downhill on Christian Street, they're going down through the grass in the reservoir into the apple orchard. I think that the water table up on that hill is so high that almost everybody up there has some kind of a sump pump, French drain, or whatever. I don't think that the current plan by this owner is adequate to take care of the lost water through trees that existed at the reservoir. I'm not even taking into consideration of how many trees that were taken down in the apple orchard. I mean, there had to be more than 60 down there, and where's all that water going? You're going to damage those houses before they're even built. The engineer mentioned about parking on Christian Street, that, you know, because of the width of the road, if somebody parked on the road, you'd still be able to get by. I suggested he traveled on Beacon Street, which is parallel to Christian Street, and see how many times you have to keep pulling over because a lot of people, even with driveways, are parking on the street. So whatever he was trying to make a point of there, I think it didn't happen. Thank you.
Anyone else like to speak in opposition? Yeah, just come to the microphone and give us your name and address for the record, please.
Good evening. My name is John Moose. I live at 105 Beacon Street. I think this submission is woefully insufficient. This is a leap of faith for this community. We don't know how much water comes onto the site on the four seasons of the year, and we don't know how much water can be taken care of through this proposed system. It's totally unclear. And in the event that it is unclear, you're going to have basements which are flooded with mold and health issues flowing from that. And it's going to be a very, very dangerous situation for the community. I heard for the first time that the developer was assured that all the permits were available, needed, were granted, but I don't think that should be a concern of the planning board. If there's litigation between the owner and the seller, that's between them. But that's premature. I'm also concerned about the representation we just heard, that the trees would be large. I think there has to be specificity as to the caliper of the trees. And red maple is one of several which are known for absorbing water, but I think there needs to be this part of the third-party review, whether or not the proposed landscaping plan will really have a positive effect on minimizing the amount of water that comes down on Christian Street. Also, I think there should be consideration of having permeable material on driveways so that water does not flow from these driveways down. I'm particularly concerned with the ones on Christian Street coming through. But I think that these are issues which need to be tested and evaluated by a third-party review so that we know whether or not the proposal will work, because right now, it is nothing more than a leap of faith. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anybody else like to speak in opposition? Anybody else? Anybody else? Anybody else? At that time, let's drop that part of the matter. This time, I'll turn it over to any of the board members who may have any questions or comments.
Mr. Chairman, if I may?
Sure. I'll start with you, Mr. Fischette.
So first of all, I do want to acknowledge the fact that the landscaping plan at least addressed the concerns we have, the streetscape. That was, and that's clearly under subdivision control, and that was something that certainly we felt very strongly about. And I think this, from that perspective, I think from the streetscape's perspective, it addresses these concerns that I had. But the major overall concern was the drainage of this, call it what you want, but it's a subdivision, it's under subdivision control. And if you remember at the prior meeting, the reason for the continuance was, and I think the quote, I had, I thought, we were asked, we were asked to be made to make a decision with one hand tied behind our back because we didn't have any comments from engineering or stormwater management. So myself personally, I didn't ask for continuance to get their comments to ignore their comments. So I'm relying, I'm not a civil engineer, stormwater management is not my area of expertise. Sitting here over the years, we've certainly dealt with a lot of the issues, but we also know what we know and we know what we don't know, and we know when we need to rely on the professionals within the industry. And so I'm certainly looking at the recommendations that stormwater management and the city's engineering department has provided this planning board in order to really move forward. So it's unfortunate, I feel your pain in the words of ex-president, is that we got those comments at the last minute, you know, within the last day. So I get the fact that you probably didn't have a chance to really see them, review them to your liking, but I really think that that has to be, that has to be addressed. That, you know, the, I'm, when I saw the peer review and the original comments, that's what I expected we were going to get, for myself personally. So for myself, I can't move forward here tonight until that gets addressed. I appreciate your comments on building three homes at a time. That has nothing to do with minimizing the impact. It was pointed out, it was all clear-cut. My day job, I can tell you what the bank wants, that is to minimize their exposure and their risk.
Understood.
Okay. So let's call that what it is.
Yeah.
So, you know, you're doing three homes on spec, get those under agreement, move them, do three more, okay? You can do a line of credit just to cover three homes at a time, you don't have to do a $5 million line, right? So that's the reason for that. Nobody's going to tell me anything different on that. So, I mean, it was clear-cut. Makes it a little bit difficult to, you know, existing conditions and then what happens, you know, pre and post-development, because obviously that was, that was, the trees were already taken down. So from my perspective, I just can't move forward tonight without, really, I think there needs to be an additional sit-down with stormwater and engineering. I want to make sure that they're kind of got the same perspective on this. I get the idea with the, with the wording is very careful. We can issue an approval with the condition that before permits can be issued on the wall, because they're going to, they have to be engineered a certain way and they have to be built a certain way beyond the expertise of this board.
Sure.
I get that. But I do think that moving forward on the overall site as to what's being proposed to address the runoff and the drainage on the site, I think that information can be given to us based on what the recommendations are from the stormwater management team and the engineers department. So that's all I have to say at this point.
Thank you. Lucia, you have any question, comment?
I'll agree with everything Member Fischette just mentioned. And there's also the issue of the NPD's permit, which obviously stormwater is a huge concern with this development. And no application has been filed. So I think that would need to be addressed as well.
Yeah, I don't know what happened there. I know I prepared the application and submitted it to NPDES, and I got carried away with a lot of other stuff. Usually, at that point, it needs to be certified by the operator, so it may have gotten tied up. I don't know if you've worked with NPDES and the online permitting. It can be challenging to say the least. It's a federal permit and it's a difficult website to work with. Your passwords continuously need to be updated and changed. So I understand the frustration that a lot of the developers, I haven't had a developer yet, and I get all flustered about trying to be in compliance with that permit because the application process of doing it online. They got rid of being able to just mail it in in person, which is what some people would just do, they'd just print it out, mail it in. It's all done electronically and it's just a difficult site to work with. But I spoke to the developer today about this and this NPDES, and said, check your mail, email, I'm going to follow up in that, and you should be getting something so that we can certify the application.
Anything, President? No. Tell, any questions, comments? Do you have anything, question, comment?
I'm agree with Mr. Fischette.
Okay. So, you know, I mean, we get this letter from the city engineer this afternoon at 5:30. But you got to admit, it's basically from October 20th, but it's consistent with the letter he gave us back in August.
Yeah, right. It was the original letter that we had an issue, I can't say we had an issue with, but...
You know, you were here once in between, when you said you were working on these things in any more time, I thought one of those, that was one of the things you're working on. And so he's figuring out, address the geotechnical engineer. I'm like, okay, well, if they're working with them, but obviously, that hasn't come up again until, like I said, what he gave us today is basically, "Given the difficulty in the history of the water table in the area, careful consideration should be given to site grading, drainage design, and potential impact to adjacent properties. Any changes to the slope, increase to impervious service, or alterations of groundwater flow path may negatively impact existing conditions. For that reason, I recommend the peer review be performed on the proposed stormwater management plan, include analysis of the pre and post-development stormwater runoff conditions, and the peer review be performed by a geotechnical engineer to evaluate the stability of the slope." The engineer also said again that they requested the granite cor, excuse me, the granite curbing of six inch should be installed along the frontage of each property for the full length of the project. I know you said it wasn't up there before, so you can leave it that way, but don't forget before was an apple orchard. So things do change. So when you come before for new subdivision, we've always had this request from the engineer for the vertical granite. Okay. They've never asked for bituminous, anything else, they've always asked for that. Any subdivision that we come in, that's the way they want to do it. So that's not a surprise to me that they asked for that. And again, they asked for that in August and they asked for that in October. But I think the concern is still with us, is the slope and how the water's going to go. And I think by the concerns that were raised by wastewater and by the engineer, both the town listed for the valuation have to be completed.
Yeah, and I apologize, I didn't, I didn't see that letter.
Yeah.
Yet, so I wasn't able to fully see.
I get it, I didn't get it till 5:30 when I'll...
Yeah. I wish I did, because I probably would have modified my response.
I was locked out the door and I looked at my last email, so I texted staff and said, make a copy for other board members who are probably en route.
Yeah.
Because I looked at the old one and I kept hoping that since you gave us the new plans, we might have thought something that you have discussed or worked out with them, which was hopefully what I was looking forward to see.
Yeah.
But they're still saying, we still need these matters. But they're still saying, we still need these matters, so I agree with other board members that, you know, if engineering's requesting it, stormwater's requesting it, then usually, we go along with their recommendations, because, you know, when it comes to drainage, it's a big issue under subdivision. And like I say, I do like the landscaping plan, like Mr. Fischette said, how it looks from the street aspect, I mean, there are two trees on most all the lots, I think that's a very big improvement, but I think the request from the engineering department is reasonable, you know, and so I agree that we should request a peer review. So that's all I have to say. Anybody else have anything to say as a result of what I said, or? So what's the request of the board?
To continue it and to be, peer review be performed by geotechnical engineering, and to continue to work with stormwater?
Yeah.
I think that's the recommendations.
Yeah, okay. Yeah, maybe we'll put that as a form of the continuance.
Yeah.
Or as we just ask if we do it. All right. So I will, Mr. Chairman, I probably hear us talking what the next step is, it really would make a motion to continue the matter with, and I guess we'd have to look at a, first of all, what you think from a timeline perspective, but is, and we're specifically requesting a peer review to be performed by a geotechnical engineer to evaluate the stability of the slope.
Okay, so, yeah, if we could get maybe some more clarification on specifically what maybe Mr. Katie's concerns were, you know, pertaining to the site, so that we could kind of narrow it down, or expand it, whatever his concerns are, you know?
Well, and I think that's when you're going to have a conversation with Mr. Katie, and say, hey, I got a continuance with the condition that, and then that's when you can find out the specifics as to what's required on that. But I think that that's, it is, it's not responsible for this board to get a recommendation like that and ignore it.
Right, no, I fully understand where you're coming from, I do, I do.
And I think from the, from the stormwater management, did you see the comments from stormwater management, the latest?
I did, I received two letters, one was dated August, maybe 7th or 8th or something, and then the other one was, I don't think I got it today.
It's not even dated, yes.
I don't think they're dated, that's what it is.
Yeah, that was the most recent one, I think we got last week.
Yeah.
Yeah.
The very end of last week, yeah.
But I mean, that, I mean, it's the one that after reviewing the updated plans, I have the following additional comments, right?
Yeah.
The updated plan shows each unit having a dry well to handle roof runoff, with none of the dry wells having any overflow to the municipal drainage system. I would like to request that the dry wells for the properties along Christian Street have overflow connections to existing new infiltration drains running along Christian Street. Cleanouts could be installed as these connection points, which could be beneficial in ensuring overall system performance and ease of maintenance. And then, again, the stormwater calculations on Sheet 7 call for each driveway having an infiltration trench, trenches with each dimensions 90 by 3 by 2, yet the utility plans does not depict these trenches. More information should be provided for proper assessment. Do these trenches connect to the dry wells, is the question here? The infiltration trench detailed provided on Sheet 8 shows an eight-inch perforated pipe running through each trench. With that in mind, I would consider requesting increasing depth of trench by additional foot or so. There needs to be conversations with stormwater management. Sheet 4 calls out that the retaining wall is to be included, but is to be designed by other, by other. I would recommend that the retaining wall design be submitted before any permits are issued. Our records of the sewer main on Roosevelt Street indicate that this pipe is made of asbestos concrete. As such, I would recommend connecting the sewer service for Lot 5 to the sewer on Llewellyn Street. I would recommend that Boring's test pits be dug and documented throughout more of the site. As it stands, no pits have been dug, and soil evaluation was done on exposed lot on number 7, Lot 17. Then have, after having spoken with our stormwater engineer consultants, they brought up the fact that the developer needs to file for the NPDES with the state, as they have disturbed well over an acre of land as part of the contiguous development project. When they last checked state records, no NPDES permits nor applications were found. Please relay these to the planning board, and you, and they have additional questions, reach out at any time. That is the most recent comments from stormwater management, and we expect that to be addressed.
Yeah, the only, I don't have any issue with any of those comments, other than the retaining wall one, because I've never, I can't say I've ever designed a project where the retaining walls were designed as part of the planning board review process.
Well, and I think, I think I addressed that when I said, they, and they're saying when the permit is issued, right? So we certainly are making a condition that, you know, you have to comply with...
Yes.
With what their request is, and as part of the permit.
Yeah.
They're going to control it.
Okay.
I'm okay with that, I know about my colleagues, but I understand that.
Okay, yeah.
I understand, from a procedural standpoint, I understand.
Okay.
Right? And then the chairman talked about the vertical granite curbing. Man, you know as well as I do, right, you do a little cul-de-sac subdivision in one of the suburbs around here, vertical granite curbing, 45-foot wide streets, you can drive a Boeing 747 down it, and it's all vertical granite curbing. So the fact that the city of Lowell wants that...
But I will say this, though, and I had this conversation with Joe today, I do a lot of work in Drake it, and Drake it has revised their subdivision regulations, and they're actually going, their preference is more in line with the direction DEP's going, with, they're trying to reduce the amount of impervious surfaces. The road went from 28 feet wide down to 22 with no curb, and vertical granite curb on both sides.
With all due respect to them, if they find out you can get more houses on the cul-de-sac, they're going to reverse that decision.
But we've always, I can tell you that, no matter what development that I was working on, whether it was a subdivision, I can't say A&R, because I'd never had the situation, but even when it's required vertical granite curbs, we usually go in and request a waiver, and they usually don't grant it, but it doesn't hurt to ask, no.
Right, no. And quite frankly, and you know as well as I do, it's part of a safety issue, and you just said it too, right, that's 16-foot percent slope, right?
14 percent.
14 percent, right?
Yeah.
You got, you got a sheet of ice, you start to slide.
Oh, yeah.
If you've got somebody walking on the side, you want to have a vertical granite curb there, right, to at least provide some protection.
Yeah, well, you hope the snowbanks are there.
Yeah.
But if it's not...
No, no, but I mean, you understand, right? I mean, a sheet of ice, that does provide protection for somebody on the sidewalk.
The protection is one thing, I really think it's a durability issue.
Oh, yeah.
The vertical granite curb lasts forever, and I'm not going to deny that, it's, but it's just very costly.
Understood.
And ultimately, these costs end up getting passed on to the people buying the house.
No, I understood, 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 but I, you know, I don't think we should compromise when everybody else around us doesn't.
And I totally understand that as well, yeah.
All right, thank you.
So in the peer review, I know in the past, we've done it for traffic, so most likely, I think, doesn't staff try to put it out to bid to be in with first for the peer review? To find a neutral party, or how's that going now?
For a peer review, staff would reach out to a third part, to third parties.
Yeah.
To solicit quotes. The board would have to vote to approve a peer review, and the applicant would have to agree, and the vote for the peer review would have to be very specific on what's being peer reviewed.
Okay.
Well, and I think the engineering department is very specific in the peer review to be performed by geotechnical engineer to evaluate the stability of the slope. I mean, I think that that's what the...
And I understand that, if they're coming from, you know, these soils, are they suitable for this type of development? Because I can't really answer that any more than I had my soil evaluators.
Right, right.
Certification 25 years ago, since I've let it expire. But I, we, I can get some, or we could bring this to a geotechnical engineer who could give a report. I don't know if that would be something worth considering.
Well, like, I know we did the traffic before, the city gave their information, the applicant gave their information, then the third party...
Reviewed it, yeah.
Yeah, communicated with both parties, and then they give us a report. I mean, that's what we did with the traffic, though, in the past, yeah. So any communication on both sides, obviously, you have argument, city has their argument. So Dylan, but the motion that Jerry made is, is that clear enough for the peer review? That he's requesting as part of the motion?
As long as the applicant's okay with it, too. Yeah, I think the motion's fine, as long as the applicant's okay with it. It would be a peer review to review the soils.
Right.
You evaluate the stability of the slope.
Yeah. And any further communication, they can speak with the engineering department for clarification, because it's their recommendation.
And I think, probably would add to that, and I suspect the engineering would get clarification, the stability of the slope, and to evaluate the proposed manner in which you're addressing the slope in the, in the final plan.
For example, the two-to-one slopes, is that follow standard engineering procedure?
Correct, correct.
Okay, yeah.
Correct.
Yeah, I have no problem with that.
Exactly.
Was he saying that's sufficient?
No.
So we have a motion on the floor by Mr. Fischette. I'll second the motion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And the opposition?
What's that?
Hearing none, so the motion is allowed. So next question is, we're going to need, so we have the motion for the peer review and to work with stormwater, so our next motion will be a date. So timetable, I don't know how long this takes. How far out we looking?
We'll need to solicit bids, select a bid, draft a contract, and then the peer reviewer will need time to review it, so it would take a bit of time. Maybe that process might take up to two months.
Probably going to January, right?
Right, we're October, oh my God, we have October 20th now.
Yeah, and then they turn November into December.
Yeah.
December's pretty quick, that's what we're coming in the month.
I don't have my 26 schedule with me.
I do.
Yeah.
Like, I don't even hear you.
Dylan, do you think, and for the, January 5th?
Because what we're looking at, we have two meetings in November, then one in December, and the one in December is like the very first and...
December 1st.
Yeah, like the very first, right. So that'd be cut in short if we went to December 1st.
I mean, if you think it can all...
I mean, it all depends on this third party, obviously.
Yeah.
We're speculating for somebody who we don't know. First, you have to find someone to do it, and then complete it.
Mr. Chairman?
Sure.
Just a question in terms of, of the, this subdivision, you know, under Chapter 41, Section 18, is deemed not a subdivision, so we're dealing with the ordinance of the city. And the question is whether we could, if we can get information to Mr. Katie, and if he were to, right now, we have, you know, a situation where he's saying, I don't have enough information, and, but if Mr. O'Hara could provide more detailed information to Mr. Katie, if in fact, Mr. Katie felt that he had sufficient information to form a opinion relative to the viability of this site for approval with all these conditions that we're talking about, conditions about having a separate plan for the retaining wall, you know, that the engineering, which, you know, again, makes sense even from the perspective of a typical A&R plan, a typical A&R lot, which is deemed not a subdivision, that you go for the building permit before the city, the city still does their due diligence and still has this oversight that we're still talking about here, in terms of saying, hey, get us an engineering plan, you know, you're doing a, what's the ratio, two-to-one, two-to-one slope, and therefore, you know, we're going to, yeah, you, you're a viable, buildable lot, but we want this information, because we're doing our due diligence from the perspective of the engineering department, and that's understandable, that's acceptable no matter what. So right now, we've got this situation where we've got, you know, the reality is, there are no streets being, being constructed here, and that's typical when you're looking at the granite curbing and things of that sort, it's because there's a new, new street being developed. You know, Mr. O'Hara earlier was talking about, well, you know, at some point, you know, the city will own it, city will own the streets. The city already owns the streets, every street here, the city owns. These are already public ways. We're not creating any new, you know, subdivision in the sense that we're putting a new road in, in that, you know, truthfully, it would almost seem like you'd want something consistent with the road that exists, but, you know, we'll address that, that other issue. But, but the other thing in terms of saying, put it off for, you know, into January, and, you know, is this something that is more from the overview of this site being one that by the law in the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, each of these lots is not deemed a subdivision, it's only under the guise of the ordinance that says, because you have more than three, we go through subdivision control review. And certainly, there's been a benefit here, based upon what, you know, you see has been presented tonight in terms of the engineering and the landscape review and Mr. O'Hara's presentation. So it's just a question, you know, at some point, is it something that we could get a, a status date before that date, and give us a chance to have further discussion with Mr. Katie, just to see if there's something that we could structure an agreeable, you know, obviously, ultimately, the decision has to be yours, but, you know, if it's something that we could try to fashion something that would address all the concerns, all the needs, and try to get in before another, you know, coming back in January for another, you know, review of the process, you know. So borderline is looking to see if there's, if we could get in before then and have this interim time period, a chance to talk with planning development, talk with engineering, and with the understanding, you know, we, we get what is the goal here. The goal is to have all concerns addressed and address them so that the city has control, and the city is certain that, you know, this is going to be done in a proper, proper fashion. So that, that would be, you know, a request if we could get a hearing before January and come back with a, in one sense, like a status report at that time with further discussion between applicant, engineer, and the city engineer.
I personally don't have a problem with a status report. The one question I would ask would be, does it, if the engineer doesn't change their mind, does that delay going forward with the peer review, push it back further?
Yeah.
Or if, I'm thinking, if we're going to do a status report, I don't know, you know, I have no problem, no, the city engineer wants to take another look at it with your applicant, I don't have a problem with that. Whatever's best for the city, and they feel you guys can hash things out, or make recommendations that you can accommodate them, I don't have a problem with that. What I would suggest, then, if you were to get a status report, you'd want to sooner than later status report, because if the engineer comes back and says, no, I'm staying by my recommendation, I hope it doesn't push it back further. I think, you understand what I'm saying?
Well, if the process involves putting something out to bid, I assume we could still put it out to bid, and then still have the opportunity to have this continued...
It probably takes a little while to get a person on board to begin with.
Right.
Is that what you're saying?
Yes.
So I don't know how long Mr. O'Meara would want to speak with engineering and wastewater again, to see what they can conclude, I mean, that's a timetable that you'd have to...
Yeah, I can admit, I was kind of shocked when I got Joe's letter, because...
And it was late today, I get it, and it puts you at a disadvantage, I understand.
When, right, when we first originally met with the city, because this was all new to me, the site had already been cleared, they asked my help, I said, I can try.
Yeah, I remember.
But it's an, it's an existing plan that's been recorded, you know, it's... But it's an existing plan that's been recorded, you know, it seems, to me, it was just puzzling that you needed subdivision approval because I had never heard of that before, and it was unique in a sense that I couldn't now offer really alternatives because the plan was already approved. I figured I could provide the additional information that would give the planning board and the people from the city the comfortable, comfortability level that they needed to approve a plan, which was like the grades, and the same concerns that the city had were the same concerns that I had. So I said, let's meet, we're concerned about the slopes, we're concerned about the drainage, I'm very familiar with the site, how do we address it? You've got a program in place, I love it, I'm gonna continue with that program. You know, why reinvent the wheel if this is how the city had been addressing the stormwater and the flows coming off the site? I didn't want to change things. And this, this got me thinking, you mentioned Van Greenby, the very first subdivision I did in this city, the very first subdivision I did, and you guys might have actually approved it, follow-the-road extension, I think it was, it was Donald Van Greenby's, it was named after his wife.
Yes.
I think there were about 27 houses on a cul-de-sac, and if you remember, that was a gravel pit before, and there was a butters that their houses were like 30 feet higher, and I forget who was the chairman, Greek guy, but he was like, you know...
John Dowling did the development, by the way.
Yeah. What was that?
John Dowling did the development.
Yeah, yes, so, but anyhow...
The chairman at the time was George R. Willis.
Yes, that's who it was.
I was sitting right next to him, yep.
Yep, so, but that subdivision were the other types of soils, the alluvial sands, you know, and up, and just comparing these two sites, how they both had these slope challenges, but based on my experience with soils and designing dozens of subdivisions over the years, I've had more challenging sites, or just as challenging as this one, with more challenging soils, but I am, what we're proposing is a standard engineering practices. A two-to-one slope is a very stable slope with this type of soils, you could even go steeper than that, maybe even a one-to-one slope. So I almost feel like that this is, you go out to third-party review, if it's gonna be based on the stability of the soils, they'll offer their general comments, you know, make sure that they're stabilized and vegetated and, you know, but it's, I'm pretty confident they're gonna come back that, yes, this is a type of soil that is built upon commonly because it's, not only is it a soil that's known for having home sites, but it's the most, one of the most common soils in Massachusetts. And this hill, this whole, you know, Christian Hill is a drumlin, and 75, maybe 80% of it has already been developed with streets that are just as steep, and in some cases, even steeper. So I, you know, could these subdivisions be approved today if you put a new road at 14%? No, the city wouldn't allow it because you don't allow streets that steep. But it exists, it's been there for over 100 years, people are using it, you know, it's got its challenges, and I thought that what I was hired to do was to provide the information that people would be comfortable with, because the other option was, well, do you fight it, you know? And I said, I don't want to fight it, I work with these people, I work with the city departments, and I'd like to work with them, so let's try to provide everything we can. But there's also an understanding that, you know, time is money, and they need to move forward, I don't know what the interest rate is on that amount of a loan, but I can tell you, it's a significant amount of money, and so they need to keep moving forward. And I, the developer had, like I said, an emergency tonight, but I think he's watching. In any case, I'm gonna speak with him tomorrow and...
Yeah, again, our issue is the, we relied on the experts in the city to provide recommendations, and you saw what the recommendations were, so I don't, it's irresponsible for this body to not act...
And fully understood, I wish they had commented the first time around, too, but it's like, okay, no comments, oh, yeah, we're really gonna comment this time around, so...
I guess, from the, from the motion, what are you looking for, some flexibility in the motion, that you want to work with engineering department? I guess, to the chairman's point, when you was, Attorney Plunkett mentioning that, my biggest concern was, gee, that could cause a further delay, though.
Yeah.
I just, you know, we just want a resolution that works for our engineering department and stormwater management, that's what we're looking for, and for them to provide us recommendations or guidance as to what is then acceptable, and then this is how we move forward. So I can appreciate what you're trying to accomplish, I just, if we come back with the same, they're still requesting a peer review, I don't, you know, to the chairman's point, you know, I don't know how we put flexibility into that. You want, we can continue it, I don't know, we can continue it 30 days or whatever, until you talk to the engineering, you know, work with stormwater management and the engineering department, and see what they come back with, but then, if they come back with still a peer review. I mean, you know, they requested a peer review in August, and the fact that there was no discussions between you and the engineering department about this, or there was no...
Resolution.
Understanding, I guess it became, what we got, I mean, that's, you know, that's what makes it a little...
We got the comments, and I forwarded them to the developer, and the developer's from a position that this was not my mistake, that was, something was overlooked.
I hear you.
And, you know, and so he's like, I really don't want to do anything.
Yeah, no, I understand, I...
So I just want to be honest with you, it's not something I had an issue with, but, you know, when he's saying, this was not our mistake, somehow the city messed up, this permit should not be required, or whatever the case may be.
Yeah, I understand.
Those are his words, and he's not here to defend himself, and I don't want to put work in the mouth, but...
No, and I understand that, it's just, I mean, myself, I'm not gonna go against what city engineer...
And I totally respect that, I understood, yeah.
What would be the next date available to come back before the board?
Our next meeting is November 3rd, Dylan, do we have too much on that meeting? That one doesn't look too bad, does it?
I don't have access to the...
I know we have, we have pre-application on Broadway, and we have a other one, I believe, is for a lot reduction, and then I forget what the third was. So if we did the next meeting, that could be just a status date, maybe, Attorney Plunkett.
The 17th?
If that's something you're gonna work out, but I'm like, you know, if engineering asks a peer review in August, now they're asking for October, are they gonna change in two weeks? I don't know, but, but then we can still give the January date, so that way we can start to have staff look into even getting people, or find out who's eligible or willing to do the peer review, might give us a little bit of time, and then we'll know even by the November date, if we got somebody on board yet, and if they say yes, I don't, how long would it take them to do it? Just, I'm just speaking suggestions-wise. I mean, obviously, it's up to the board, but, but I don't, you think if you come back in two weeks, engineering, stormwater, are they gonna say, yeah, you convinced me, I'm all set? That's what you're asking for.
I mean, they say what they've said, you know, I...
I hear ya.
Yeah.
You know, if you want to give it a shot, I got no problem, you know, up to the other board members, obviously, but all I would suggest, they're gonna say, no, I'm sticking with my guns and keep your other date, because I don't think you want to wait until two more weeks before you pick another date, because then you're just pushing it back further. If they say, no, I passed that a month ago, I'm asking for it now...
I would just like to have an opportunity to speak about what happened tonight with the applicant, and, because ultimately, it's gonna be his decision, you know, so I...
I get it, I get it, I mean, I understand, you know, you work for a gentleman, you have to listen to what his concerns are.
If it's possible to come back in that first meeting in November, just to, what's the date on that? That's the...
So, that's November 3rd.
So the question would be...
So it's two weeks.
Yeah, so, okay.
That would be our preference, Mr. Chairman, and just, I think I misquoted the statute, it's chapter 81L, chapter 41, section 81L, so, just for the record.
Yeah.
And I'd like to say that George Zaharulis was a great guy.
So would you still want the second date, or just...
November 3rd.
If we say November 3rd, and if we could retain that January date...
Okay.
Okay, that makes sense.
So September 3rd would be for a status date, and now, January, what did?
January 5th, yep.
Okay, so...
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman.
We have to make a motion for those dates first.
Well, the original motions, well...
The original motion was to continue for the peer review and for the work with and cooperate with the stormwater department.
And then if they come back on November 3rd, and the engineering and stormwater is satisfied and no longer looking for the peer review, we would withdraw that, that request, that, right, okay.
Yeah.
All right, so...
And then, and then the question there was, if we're doing a status date, it's not really considered per se a public hearing.
I know.
So then, if we get the status on November 3rd, we'd have to, we'd have to either put it back...
I think we have to continue it to, we have to continue it to November 3rd.
Both dates anyway.
No, both dates, that can't be just a status update, all right, it's gotta be...
That would still be the preference.
Yeah.
Have it continue to November 3rd, then.
We'd have to continue it to November 3rd.
Yeah.
With the applicant speaking with engineering and stormwater management, and then, quite frankly, whatever that outcome, all right, we would act on that, if in fact, they have, they become comfortable with the solution and no longer requiring a peer review.
Right.
Otherwise, then we would be looking at the original motion of the peer review.
And obviously, just to make clear again, that the intent is not to ignore or override any of the concerns, it's just a matter of addressing it by means of proper conditions that would make certain that there is the oversight retained by the city to make certain that these issues are addressed in line with what the city is requiring, so...
So the question I have, we already approved the motion for the peer review, are we gonna keep that motion forward, or are we gonna withhold that until November 3rd?
I think we withdraw that, and then on November 3rd, we'd have to make that decision, I don't know if that gives us enough time. Potentially, you're gonna delay it even further, but I just, I don't see how we can have them concurrently out there.
I mean, because, right, so if he withdraws the motion for the peer review and to continue work with stormwater, and we continue to November 3rd, then as a result of November 3rd, if you can't resolve the matter with the city engineer, then we're gonna have to ask for the peer review there and put out to maybe the January date, if not later, but, correct?
Yep.
Okay, so, so first of all, we have to back up and make a motion to, then make a motion, Mr. Bichette, to withdraw the motion at this point in time for the peer review and to work with stormwater.
Yeah, so, Mr. Chairman, I withdraw the initial motion requiring the peer review and extending or continuing it to the January 5th meeting, we're looking to withdraw that motion.
Okay, and I was, I second that, so I will second the motion to allow the withdrawal. What's the request of the board, are they in favor to withdraw the motion for the peer review at this time? I'll signify, yes.
Ayes.
All right.
Any opposition saying no? So that's withdrawn. So now the secondary motion would be to continue the matter to November 3rd date, for the applicant to have the opportunity to work with the engineering department and the wastewater department. Correct?
To address, address concerns that have been communicated to the planning board.
Okay, and so at this point in time, we don't, the January 5th date's off the table, and we're just gonna continue it to November 3rd.
Thank you very much.
Is that, is that your understanding, Counsel?
Yes, yes, Mr. Chairman.
All right, so then on the 3rd, we'll either have to do the peer review and put it out, or if you have the satisfaction, back from the engineering department, and, okay.
We're gonna get to take a motion, we're gonna take a vote on that, right?
Yeah, so the motion on to continue to November 3rd?
I second that.
All right.
But we have a motion?
All right.
Motion made and seconded?
Yep.
Do we have a second on the matter? Okay, all in favor to a November 3rd date?
Aye.
All right.
All right.
Any opposition? Hearing none, that motion carries. So we'll continue to November 3rd. Thank you, good luck. Okay. Counsel, you guys can set up, I'm reading the next application that's gonna be withdrawn, so. Public Shetree hearing, 2242961, 70 and 75 Van Greenby Road, we do receive an app, a request for a withdrawal, but I'm gonna read the advertisement. In accordance with Mass. Camelar, chapter 97.5 and chapter 260 of the Lowell Code of Ordinance, the Lowell Planning Board will hold a public hearing to hear all interested persons about the proposed removal of one tree at 2 Van Greenby Road with a diameter of approximately 34 inches, one tree at 24 Van Greenby Road with a diameter of approximately 28 inches, one tree at 29 Van Greenby Road with a diameter of approximately 40 inches, two trees at 61 Van Greenby Road with a diameter of approximately 31 and 29 inches, one tree at 70 Van Greenby Road with a diameter of approximately 30 inches, and two trees at 75 Van Greenby Road with a diameter of approximately 48 and 23 inches. The removal of these trees is in the maintenance of the public sidewalk and utilities. We did receive a letter from DPW requesting that this matter be withdrawn at this time, and they showed an interest that they would come back in the future to address these matters before a public hearing. So the applicant has a request to withdraw, what's the request of the board?
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion to allow the applicant to withdraw the petition without prejudice.
Motion's made, and we have a second? Second by Lucia, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Here vote yes, any opposition, hearing no, that motion to withdraw is allowed. Next matter we move along, this special permit, 55 Willard Street, the Lowell Planning Board will hold a public hearing to hear all interested persons relative to an application by Daniel Gilde to split the existing lot and construct a new single-family home at the above address. The subject property is located in the traditional, single-family zoning district. The proposal requires site, special permit, excuse me, approval per section 5.1.17 of the Lowell zoning ordinance to reduce the required frontage. May we have the applicant, please?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman, and good evening to all. For the record, my name is John Gary of Gary &amp; Gary LLP, 32 Church Street, Lowell, Mass. I'm here tonight representing the applicant, Daniel Gilde. Dan is with us tonight, as is Matt Hammer from Landplex. We also have Ryan Rourke. Ryan and Dan have an agreement whereby if this special permit is approved, Ryan will be purchasing the lot with the proposed single-family home, and Ryan will be the developer. Ryan has an excellent reputation in the city for rehabbing and redeveloping properties within the city. In advance of tonight's hearing, we've provided the board with the site plan, with the floor plans and the renderings, and if you note, the renderings are colorized and give you a very good indication of what the finished product would look like in terms of the new home that's proposed to be constructed. The subject property presently consists of a single-family Cape Cod-style home on approximately 18,321 square feet of land, properties located within the traditional, single-family zoning district. The existing home has three bedrooms and one bath, and is situated on the northeasterly side of the lot along Willard Street. As the chairman mentioned, we're here tonight seeking a special permit pursuant to 5.1.17 in order to split this existing lot into two lots and reduce the frontage for each of the proposed lots. So 5.1.17 allows for the frontage to be reduced in certain zoning districts by up to 15 feet. In this case, we're requesting that the frontage in each lot be reduced by approximately 10 feet. Lot 1, which is the home with, which is the lot with the existing home, will roughly have frontage of 60 feet, 60.2 feet. Lot 2, which is where the proposed home will be, will have frontage of 59.8 feet, so roughly 10 feet by, for each lot. The intent, as you know, of 5.1.17 is to give this board some oversight for redevelopment of these lots with insufficient frontage. So that's what we're before you for tonight. If approved, the home that we are proposing is a Cape Cod-style home containing two bedrooms, one bath, with about 1,156 square feet of living space. The traditional, single-family zoning district requires that you have 70 feet of frontage and at least 7,000 square feet of land area in that district. As I indicated, the applicant's proposing to create two lots out of this existing one lot, so Lot 1, which again is where the existing home will, is and will be, will contain, is proposed to have 10,030 square feet of land area. proposed to have 10,030 square, square feet of land area. Lot 2, which is where the new home will be built, is proposed to have 8,218 square feet of land. Otherwise, the lots are dimensionally compliant, we don't need any relief pursuant to 5.1, and we also meet the off-street parking requirements pursuant to 6.1 of the ordinance. About a week or so ago, we supplemented our application materials by providing the board with a GIS exhibit plan, a neighborhood exhibit plan. The intent of that exhibit plan was to demonstrate to the board that what we are proposing is in line and in character with, with the neighborhood. So that plan shows roughly half of the lots within that, that sampling have frontage of less than 70 feet, which is the requirement in the district. You know, obviously, the other half have sufficient frontage. But, so the, the, clearly, the intent of that exhibit plan was to demonstrate to the board that what we're proposing is in character with the neighborhood. We've also had a chance to review the staff comments, those, those comments are pretty straightforward. They mentioned that the, one of the primary objectives of the Lowell Forward Plan is to create additional housing, and what we are doing here creates additional housing within the city. The comments also note that the proposal is in line with the character of the neighborhood, and references that many of the lots in the neighborhood have pre-existing non-conforming frontage, meaning that most of the lots have less than the 70 feet of required frontage. The only other comments were from relating to engineering. We've had the opportunity to review those comments, we have no concerns relative to those comments, or to meeting the requirements within those comments. And so, so I'll just take a few minutes here to run through the, the relevant criteria for issuance of this special permit. So in terms of application to the Lowell Forward Plan, as I said, we are meeting one of the main objectives of the Lowell Forward Plan by creating additional housing. It's one lot, but it's, it's, it's one additional housing unit within the city. The home that's proposed will be a new home, market rate, property, energy efficient, and it will serve this neighborhood for the next 100 years or so. In terms of neighborhood character, considering that the lots that we are proposing are both in excess of the minimum lot area, and the frontage is consistent with what's in the neighborhood, we believe that what we are proposing is certainly in character with the neighborhood. In terms of environmental impacts, there'll be no adverse environmental impacts, the property will be tied to the city water and sewer. Matt has designed a stormwater system that will retain any store, any roof runoff, so that none is, no runoff enters into the city drainage system. So again, no adverse environmental impacts. In terms of traffic, access, and safety, both properties will be accessed by a driveway off of Willard Street, the both lots will have sufficient off-street parking. Access for fire and safety is more than sufficient off of Willard Street, and I would suggest the traffic really is not a concern for this proposal. And in terms of any other additional impacts of the proposal, so any other additional impacts of the proposal will all be positive in nature. For example, at the end of the day, once this property is built out, the real estate tax revenue to the city will be substantially more than it is right now. During the build-out phase, local contractors were used for, for the construction of the home. And considering the size of the property, there really isn't any impact to the school system, or any impact should be negligible, offset by the benefits. So we don't believe there are any, any detriments to this proposal at all, we believe that we have established that we meet the criteria for the issuance of the special permit, but at this point, I'll turn the presentation over to Matt, so he can go through the plans with the board. Thank you.
Good evening, for the record, Matt Hammer, Landplex Engineering, 60 Fletcher Street, Lowell, Mass. So here's the subject parcel here. There's an existing, um, single-family dwelling here that has its own parking and garage to service that building, as well as a, a walkway that comes in to service that building with a deck off the rear. That property is going to be proposed to be 10,225 square feet. So the frontage for that lot in this lot line will not affect its current use of that property in regard to the walkway in the parking area. The newly created lot is here, is 8,096 square feet. That lot is shown to have a proposed, single-family dwelling, as well as two parking spaces to service that dwelling, a rear deck, and an infiltration system at the rear of the property. In order to construct that house, the two trees that are currently on that property will be, needing to be removed. So to compensate for the removal of those two trees, we are proposing to include two proposed trees, one on each lot, located here. This is a rendering of the house itself. This is the self, house here with the driveway, showing the wall configuration to encompass that driveway, and it's a, a one-story cape. We had also done a, a neighborhood plan, exhibit plan, do you wanna go through that?
No.
Sure. So, um, so here's the locus property here. We wanted to show the number of, um, single-family residences nearby, which are located in green color, which also have less than 70 square feet of frontage. And as you can see, there's 46 nearby residences that meet the same general criteria of these lots. And then there's 48 lots that are shown in red with 70 feet or more frontage. And we submitted that to the file. And I can turn it back over to Attorney Gary.
Thank you, Matt. So again, Mr. Chairman, we believe that we meet the criteria for issuance of the special permit, we respectfully request approval tonight, but we're here to try to address any concerns or answer any questions from the board. Thank you.
Thank you. At this point in time, I'll turn it over to the public. Anybody here this evening wanna speak in favor of this project? Anybody in favor? In favor, in favor? Hearing none, anybody in opposition? In opposition? In opposition? Hearing none? This time, I'll turn it over to the board members. I do have one question. So I was fortunate enough to be up there last week, and I met the owner on-site, and I spoke with him at length, and he discussed the, the, they planned for me, and you showed me the, the drawings. And the only question I had then was, so I know there's a stone wall there, so, Matt, can you address that? Because I'm thinking like, what's gonna happen with the stone wall? Because obviously, we were standing right there, and I saw the wall, and we asked the applicant, what are you gonna do with the stone wall? He goes, well, you don't have to speak with my engineering department. And I said, I understand that completely, so.
Yeah.
Obviously, to get to the house now, that wall is right there.
That's correct.
Okay.
So, it's a little hard to see on the plan.
Yeah, I tried looking at it on the piece that I get about that size.
Yep.
I looked at it a few times.
So this wall is gonna stay.
Okay.
This wall will have to be cut out in order to construct the house.
Yeah, that's what I figured, okay.
And then this wall, there's gonna be a wall here.
Okay.
Next to that white vinyl fence, okay? And then there'll be a series of walls that bring you in to get you into the actual residence. So there's gonna be another set of walls here in order to compensate for that grade differential. Now, these aren't big walls. The, the wall along the driveway is approximately 1 to 3 feet in height, and the same thing is for these walls coming in here for the stairwell.
So, you're saying, and there's that vinyl fence, I know, which is, is on, is on Mr. Gildea's property, right?
Yes, that's correct.
So that's gonna stay there, that wall too?
Well, the, the wall's gonna replace that.
It's gonna replace it, okay.
Yep, the vinyl fence, yes. And then they might put fencing above it. But that would be up to the.
Yeah, that was the only question I had, when I saw that, I thought, obviously, you're gonna have to deal with that slow, somehow, to be able to access the property. Like, I do know the driveways are far, far right.
Yep.
But it was just to get onto the lot and everything else, okay?
Yep.
All right, thank you. So any of the board members have any comments, now that I started?
Yeah, yeah, sure, Mr. Chairman, if I, if I may.
Go, Mr. Vichette.
Um, first of all, Mr. Gildea, you here this evening? Yeah, I just, you, you, the lawn was impeccable, the place was, I, really, I was, I was impressed when I pulled up, and I actually go by, I would buy a house on the way here this evening, so, it's between my office and, and, and City Hall here. So, certainly, and again, it's an impeccable piece of property. My compliments to the applicant, you've come before us enough, I wanna see that map that shows other lots in the area, and what the frontage is. I, even the developer's familiar with me and knows that that's what I wanna see. You've gotta demonstrate within the neighborhood what, what's there.
Right.
And I think you have. An 11, oh, you know, God bless you, an 1,100-square-foot house, I wish more of those were being built, rather than the McMansions that are being built, but the cost of land is obviously, creates that, that issue. But there's a, there's a dire need for this type, this size housing in, in, not even just in the city, in the Commonwealth. So I mean, from that perspective, I, I think it's fairly consistent with the overall neighborhood. There's, there's two homes, when you get closer to that lot intersection, that are really close together. I will say, a lot of the homes are on that stretch of street, a little bit more spread out.
Yeah.
But the immediate neighborhood within that zoning kind of supports what you're, you're looking to do here. I think, Matt, the engineer, and all you guys have a history coming here, you know, we've had other projects where you've had the driveway trying to fit it in, but it's not consistent with the neighborhood. The retaining wall is consistent with what's there, so I don't think it's, I mean, it's gonna fit in. So from my perspective, I, I don't have an issue. I just certainly, any condition I would put is that, and you have to submit that, but it would be subject to obviously, that plan that was presented here this evening for that home, is the exact home to be.
Absolutely.
Built on that site, so. And, and again, there's two, two street trees, hate to see those mature trees coming down, but I understand you can't put the house without them, so I understand the, the, the trees that, the, you're putting, Matt, the two street trees, just, there's one on the site, and you're adding one to the existing home, is that?
Yeah, that's correct.
Yeah.
I just wanted to note that we're gonna have to take, Mr. Gildea was gonna have to take those trees down anyways, because he's putting solar panels on his house.
Oh, okay, okay.
So, you know, the setback from the road.
Yep.
So, they were gonna have an effect on the solar effect with the southern.
And I mean, they're really not, the reason they add to the streetscape right now is because they're so large.
Yeah.
Right, if they weren't as large, from the setback, it really doesn't, so by adding these trees, actually, where you are, in time, that'll have a, I think, a softer impact on the, on that road, so.
Mm-hmm.
No, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
You're welcome. Lucia, any questions, comment?
Um, just a comment, I like the scale of the proposed home, I think that the relief requested is not a detriment to anyone in that neighborhood, so I think, I think it's great.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Tell, any questions, comments? Jovison?
I'm all set.
Questions, comments? Okay. So we have a request for the special permit. I'll make a motion to approve with the condition that we maintain that, that put the two new trees in, one on each of the property. And, and also for the architectural drawings that were submitted to us, I think it's dated September 4th, 2025, for the renderings that we had submitted this evening.
Correct.
For this, so I'd make a motion for those plans, as well as the two trees for the special permit. Do we have a second?
A second then?
Second. Motion's made in second, all in favor say aye.
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 All right.
Any, any opposition? Hearing none, the motion carries. Five in favor, and none against. Wish you well, have a good day.
Thank you all, appreciate your time.
Good seeing you. You're welcome, take care, Matt, have a good night. Okay, moving along on the agenda, we have a zoning amendment, which is the Hamilton Canal District Parcels 2, 3A, 4, and 5. In accordance with Mass General, Chapter 40A, Section 5, the Lowell Planning Board will hold a public hearing to hear all interested persons relative to an ordinance to amend the Code of Ordinance, City of Lowell, Massachusetts, respect to Chapter 290, therefore entitled Lowell Zoning Code, by amending certain sections of 10.3, entitled Hamilton, Hamilton, Canal District Form-Based Code. The proposed amendment consolidates Parcel 2, 3A, and 4 into a single parcel, Parcel 4, and amends the building form standard for Parcels 4 and 5. May we hear from the applicant, please?
Thank you, Chairman, members of the board, I appreciate the time tonight. My name is Matt Tamico, I'm representing Cabot Cabin Forbes. We will be the proponent for development at 291 and 341 Jackson Street in the Hamilton Canal District. We have worked with the DPD to put together some tweaks to the existing zoning bylaw to allow for the type of development that we are interested in doing in the city of Lowell. We're looking to put forward a market rate, Class A, multifamily development in the Hamilton, Hamilton Canal District. There were some slight dimensional controls that we, we think to make the project financeable today, we would want to be tweaked. And today with me is Peter Ellison from TEC, who'll be presenting some of those changes.
Thank you.
Good evening, members of the board, my name's Peter Ellison, I'm a civil engineer with TEC. So we assisted Cabot Cabin and Forbes with review of the existing Form-Based Code, which as you all know, was implemented in about 2010, so it's about 15 years old at this point, to come up with some alterations needed in support of the project. Just to remind the board, we're really looking at what we consider two development parcels. If you're looking at Canal Street, on the left side, the point parcel is a combination of Parcels 2, 3A, and 4, and then across Canal Street is, is Parcel 5. So we've put together a site plan to kind of show what's being proposed on the site, which is Slide 4 in the packet that's been provided to the board. On the left side of Canal Street, Parcels 2, 3A, and 4, we're looking at this as one contiguous, large parcel to be developed. The proposed building essentially encumbers all three of those parcels with the east face of that wall, right up to the property line along Canal Street, which is how it's envisioned in the, in the Form-Based Code. Parcel 3A is, is kind of an interesting one, that was originally kind of thought of as a cul-de-sac access to be utilized for access to two separate parcels, whereas in this case, we're proposing one larger contiguous development. We've kind of restricted that area to be kind of an internal courtyard and a loading and unloading area. And then across the street on Parcel 5, you can see a, a kind of a horseshoe-shaped building there. Both the west and the north property line, faces of that building are proposed right up against the parking line, property line, which is consistent with the original Form-Based Code. We did have a, a professional land surveyor on the team, Hancock Associates, to prepare a survey for the Parcels of 2, 3A, and 4, because we are combining those parcels. So to dive into some of the proposed changes to the Form-Based Code, sheet, page 7 of the presentation that was provided, kind of summarizes the existing Form-Based Code for both Parcel 2 and Parcel 4, and then in the bottom left of the page, we have a combination of those standards into one set of standards for Parcel 4, what we're calling the new Parcel 4. So right at the top, you'll see in red text, we're looking at 1.32 acres of developable land, that's because we're combining all three of those parcels into one. And then what we've provided in red text, really the most significant change, I feel, is the, the height range changed from what was originally 70 feet to what is now 85 feet. On the north 2 property line, the setback is being proposed to be adjusted from what was 20 feet to now 15 feet, and then on the south. And then on the south property line, which falls along the Pawtucket Canal, we're proposing to change that setback minimum build-to line from what was 10 feet down to 1 feet. In the bottom right corner of that page, you can kind of see a summary of, on the left side, the graphical site plan layout of the parcels for Parcels 2 and 4 from on the left side. That's the existing Form-Based Code. And then on the right is the newly created Parcel 4 that shows the larger combined developable area. And it's important to note, we're also looking, we're also going to be seeking to acquire some buildable area from the city of Lowell that's currently owned by the city on Parcel 3 as well in order to support the creation of the new building in this location. I feel like I'm throwing a lot at the board right now. If it makes sense to open up questions for this parcel, I'm happy to do so, or we can march ahead to Parcel 5 and then open it up after that.
Sure, just march ahead to 5 when we can open up that.
Okay. Sounds great.
Thank you.
So Parcel 5, if you're looking at the plan view, is on the east side of Canal Street. To dive into some of the changes to the Form-Based Code, at the top of Page 9, we have the existing Form-Based Code for Parcel 5, and then below that, with red text, some of the alterations that are being proposed. Along the eastern property line, so that's between the existing building there and what is newly proposed building for Parcel 5, reducing that setback from 30 feet to 10 feet. Some of the reasons why that's being proposed, Parcel 5 was originally envisioned to have loading and parking access along that side, whereas that's no longer needed for this parcel. It's sought to reduce that down to 10 feet. Similar to the Parcel 4 across the street, the building height is proposed to be increased from 70 feet to 85 feet. And then along the southern face, we're proposing to reduce the minimum street wall percentage to 70%. And what that allows us to do is to create that horseshoe shape to the building, and that internal courtyard along, in Parcel 5 is thought of to be kind of like a nice amenity space for both the first-floor residential, first-floor commercial uses as well as the residential uses above. And then also included in the packet in the last few slides are renderings that were put together by TAT, the project architect, to kind of help the board envision the style of the building and what the development could look like if we were to incorporate these Form-Based Code amendments. So with that being said, I'd be happy to turn it back over to the board and see if you have any questions.
Thank you. So at this point in time, I'll turn it over to the public. Anybody here this evening like to speak in favor of the zoning amendment? In favor? In favor? In favor? Hearing none. Anybody speak in opposition in regard to the zoning amendment? In opposition? In opposition? In opposition? Hearing none. At this time, I'll turn it over to the board members.
Mr. Chairman, if I.
Sure.
If I may, just to kind of, if you don't mind, I'm just going to give a kind of overview of Form-Based zoning, and I think we've got some newer members who's kind of unique. George Proakas was the architect of this originally, and the whole idea was to enact the Form-Based zoning in this area to expedite the permitting process, right? So as a developer, you have the option of going conventional, and you could actually go through the permitting process if you wanted to deviate from what had been obviously previously approved under the Form-Based zoning. So this body had approved, of course, recommended to the city council, how individual buildings would sit on these lots without even having a building or proposal before you. And then, so as long as a developer followed that form base that was on there, they didn't have to come before Planning Board for Site Plan Review or Special Permit, and it just, so it just expedites the whole process. And obviously, the intent was, times have changed, big disappointment, it really didn't develop the way we hoped it would. You know, the resistance was to try to keep residential out of there as much as possible for the longest time, but the reality of it is, we didn't get a bunch of innovative businesses coming in there. And, you know, it's, the UMass Innovation Hub is fantastic over there, but we really didn't get what we were hoping to get over there. And we've got the new, you know, high-rise district in the area. We've got the MBTA zoning that we incorporated, and it falls within there. I think it's, you've highlighted in the, I think, DPD's memo, the proximity to Gallagher Terminal. And I just think, I'm a big believer, and we've got to create some critical mass in the downtown in order to support some of the businesses we want to see. And honestly, we have to have more positive activity going on to kind of dwarf some of the unacceptable activity going on, right? So the more we can develop that area, and, you know, we, I think at this point, we've held out for 15 years and to really, we're just not getting what we want to get. So from my perspective, I've looked at the changes, I've looked at even the high-rise districts we have, the setbacks, again, you're making it more like, again, downtown development, more walkable, more, you know, tied to the, tied to the street as well. So I'm fine with what you're proposing, disappointed with the original, you know, what the original intent was, the Form-Based zoning, what we were hoping was going to happen there, but we've got to deal with the reality of the situation. Hopefully, you know, hopefully it'll be an exciting project, and the idea is that hopefully it'll trigger other projects as well within the district, so thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just kind of give you a little.
Thank you, Mr. Vichet.
Yeah, thank you.
Lucia, any questions, comments?
No.
Okay. Tel, question? Jovison?
No question.
Thank you for explanation.
Yes, I appreciate it.
Yep.
It's unusual, there's not a lot in the state. I think this was the first, first one in the state, I think.
It could be.
Yeah, I think it was. Yeah.
Yeah, and I'm just following up, but Jerry said, obviously, we got the memo that we got from staff, obviously. You worked with the planning department, looks like the planning department is in agreement with this proposal. Seems like a letter we got from Giovanni Biazzaro, which is the Assistant City Manager, DPD Director, explained it all out. And then we got another letter from, this was to Mayor Daniel Rock and the City Council from the City Manager, Golden, explained the request that's to be forward this evening as well. So I have no problem with the project as well, obviously. I agree with Mr. Vichet, you know, things have changed, and it's time to make a change for this project, so I'm in agreement with the zoning as well, the zoning recommendation, so.
So we need a motion on the floor to recommend to the city council either a favorable or unfavorable recommendation for the zoning. Mr. Vichet, I think you summed it up better than anybody else. So I think I'll turn to you for this one.
All right. So certainly, when they make a motion to have a, for the planning board to give a positive recommendation for the purported changes to the Form-Based zoning as it supports the goals of the city's master plan and addresses the changing needs within the Hamilton Canal District and towards the, towards the development of that area of the downtown, so I think that's.
I'll second the motion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? Hearing none, that motion carries. Recommendation to the council is approved. Five in favor, none against. Wish you well, good luck.
All right. Thank you all. Have a good night.
You're welcome. Okay, moving along from the agenda, we have further comments from board members.
Mr. Chairman, I just would like to, first of all, thank you and Lucia and Caleb for, they were able to make it to the NEMCOG annual meeting, and they did recognize some people, and I was fortunate enough to be recognized. It was just so special to have all of you there, and I appreciated that. It was actually nice, I had people from the neighborhood group from years ago that were there as well, so it was really, very special, so thank you for that.
So Jerry got the award at the NEMCOG, that's their annual meeting, there was other awards given out, and he got the award from NEMCOG, and he also got a citation from Representative Rodney Elliott, which I think was a total surprise to Jerry.
Complete surprise.
Because Jerry knew by the presentation on the pamphlet what the awards were, who they were given to, and then when the representative showed up and gave him a nice, and they talked about how they're protectable roots and how they started way back in the days with, dealing with neighborhood associations, association and everything else. And it was nice when Jerry gave his speech, he welcomed myself, Lucia, and Caleb, all by name, he thanked us for being there, for support for him, for being on the board. I mean, it was a great tribute to Jerry, the fact that he's been on NEMCOG for 17 years and the planning board for 19, and all the different boards he's been off of the zoning. We thought it was a well-deserved award, and that's why we were present to help share that special moment for him. And again, Jerry, we congratulate you on that and all the good work you do for us.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I truly did appreciate it.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
And then Jerry got up there and took some pictures, so hopefully you'll see how those flossed out. It was a very good, it was a very nice evening. They had a woman from the, from the housing department who came and spoke about housing through the city and what they're trying to do, I mean, through the state, I should say, how they're trying to implement more housing, what the goals were set, which was educational, talked about where she even started in Westford, which falls under NEMCOG jurisdiction. So, yeah, it was a very nice evening, though. Again, Jerry, congratulations, so.
Any other further updates? I know you just pulled out of one meeting to come to another, Lucia, any updates on historic or?
Well, recently, we approved the firehouse on Mamick Road.
Oh, okay. The one that we had at our last meeting?
Exactly. So they are, the city is putting in an application in hopes of adding it to the National Registry of Historical Significance.
Nice.
And so hopefully, that will reassure us that most of the architectural heritage of that parcel will stay intact.
Okay. Thank you very much. I think that concludes our meeting tonight. We need a motion to adjourn. I'll make a motion to adjourn. We have a second by Lucia. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
We have adjourned. Good night, and thank you, everyone.
Good night.
She appreciated that because her ankle, she could like barely stand. She was really happy, she says, oh my gosh, she was so surprised.